I've called a special meeting to order your stand for pledge. I'm going to sign up, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call. Maggie Baranowski, Charles Petzatell.
Here.
Beth Engel. Here. Andrew Goulet.
Here.
Tim Mitzkowski.
Here.
Sharon Stiltner. Here. Heidi Campbell.
Here.
Let's have a summary. Okay, first up, A.J. Garshat. In regards...
He's outside right now.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna wait a few minutes before I go up.
Okay, Beatrice Lawsonberg.
It's me. Just stand here, just for a minute.
Right there, over here, over here.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, I am Beatrice Garshat Lawsonberg. I've been a member of the community since I was seven. I am a teacher since 1987. By the many years of working with students in both parochial and public school systems, and I would like to speak a little bit about what happened to my nephew, A.J. It's pretty sad. I wouldn't want that to happen to any child, not just because he's my nephew, but any child that I feel has had injustice that's been done to him. I just wrote his apology, and it's beautifully written and sincerely heartfelt. I have to say a little bit about my nephew. He's very, very loving, very caring. Every time he speaks to me, he tells me how much he loves me. Okay? This is what my nephew is like. Not a mean person. You've read the articles that every time they interviewed him, he has never said anything egotistical. I'm the one who did the football team, I'm the leader that did it up. He's never, ever acted like that, always said the teams come first. I understand seventeen-year-olds at the game, from what I appear, and I found what has happened should have been rectified. I believe in expansion of one, two games, possibly basketball, but to extend it for the whole season and take away his baseball, which he loves. This child, young man, that's his life. Sports. For four years in high school, all he has done is worked to build himself athletically. He never missed games. He wasn't rude to coaches. They will tell you he was not if you interview them. I feel what was done to him was wrong. I mean, it just distraught the young man where he would go and sit in the garage. And my brother was worried about him. He didn't want to do anything. It was like his life was shut down. The thing he loved so much was taken from him. And I want that to be rectified for him. That's terrible. If there's anything I'm missing or things I don't know about that were in the closed meetings, I would love to know what it was, but I feel that something isn't adding up right. Something was wrong. And this judgment on him, it was too excessive, too extreme. Thank you for listening. And if you'd like to read his apology...
Oh, you'll read it.
I would pass it.
Read it out.
Would you like me to read it?
Read it out.
I'd like to start by saying thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to all of you. First, I'd like to apologize to the Mazkas. There's no excuse or apology. I can make you erase what I said and did to both of you. Neither of you deserve it. And both of you have been mentors to me during my high school career here, on and off the field and court. I made a mistake I cannot take back. My father has raised me to be a better man than what I displayed last Friday. I'd like to apologize to Mr. Highstreet for letting you down. You've been more than a coach. You've been more than a teacher to me. In all honesty, you're the best man I've had the privilege of knowing. And what hurts the most about what I did is that I let you down because you taught me how to be such a much better person in so many different ways. And you didn't deserve what I did. I'd like to apologize to my team. As a captain, you need to be there for your teammates when they need you the most, and I wasn't. I don't care what our record is. You play for the passion, and you have the passion you have for the game, and the name on front of your jersey. I'm a very emotional athlete only because I care. And sometimes, like Friday, I lose my emotions, I lose myself, and let emotions get in the way. And I only have myself to blame. And I have come to reassure that everyone has a consequence. I'd like to apologize to Dr. Stricker, Mr. Melrose, and Mr. Tosi as well. You guys have given me more than enough opportunities to be a resourceful student, athlete, and I let you down. As you guys, being administrators here, you have to make decisions every day for this school. And I can respect your decision because you guys only want what is best for the school and community. I want to apologize to Mr. Landrum for being the athletic director. And I may be wrong, but when it comes down to your call, I understand your decision because athletics is his main focus because the kids become successful in teaching them their lessons are what is important. You've given them numerous amount of chances, and I can't thank you enough for that. I want to apologize to Alex Barnaby as well because what I did was completely uncalled for, and I wish I could take it back. You being an athlete, I'm sure you understand the competitive edge I get when I play sports. But there's no excuse for what I choose to do on Friday. I let the community down as a whole. And there's younger kids who look up to me, and what I should be is a role model material. I'd like to apologize to my father. You've raised me better than what I've shown and let you down. You've always had my back and been my corner, no matter what, and you don't deserve any of this. To all of you, I truly am sorry for what I did. I'll do anything to be able to play and put on that jersey again. I never have and never will give up on Elginac Sports. They're my life and have made me who I am today. You have taught me so many lessons in so many different ways, and I'm asking for another chance to be on the team again. I don't care if I don't play another minute. I just want to be a part of this team for the remainder of my senior season. Mr. Highstreet, I'll run until my legs fall off every day after practice. I'll do whatever I have to do to be back on the team. I truly am sorry to each and every one of you. Please just think about it. Your decision remains the same. I will respect it either way. And you'll see a better A.J. Garshat walking through these halls here. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to all of you.
Next, Chris Manning, is it? How about John Robinson?
Over here. Just left the court.
A.J. A.J. A.J.
Okay, and Andrew Garshat.
I'm gonna wait for somebody else to come in.
There's no one else.
Can I say something? I can go a little more. Thank you. I just wanted to say, not on this subject, but when Mr. Campbell walked in, he made a comment to me, "Why am I not surprised to see you here today?" I just think that's very disrespectful. I think our town needs more respect for the parents, people that care, and I just think it's uncalled for. And I shouldn't feel comfortable to come to my own school board meeting or any play township meetings without little snide comments. I just want to say that I think everybody knows a lot of disrespect in this town. And I explained it right here.
There is.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Identify yourself.
My name is Jeffrey Sullier. I'm born and raised here in Elginac. I'm the father of seven girls and one boy. So I think I know a little bit about kids. Now, I've watched this situation transpire on social media, in the paper. Something that I pride myself in is I look at things from both perspectives. I see both perspectives. When the day comes that we allow kids to become physical with staff, that's a problem. But I'll tell you something that impressed me about this young man. Something that I don't see in today's kids, they stood up, they said, "I'm wrong. I made a mistake. Forgive me." That takes a person to do that. Realize you could be changing this man's future. Give him another shot. That's my opinion. I'm a taxpayer here. The man needs to be given another shot. None of you here have never required another shot? What'd you do with him? You're on the school board. Think about it. I don't condone what he did. We cannot have physical altercations with staff. But the man stood up. He was a man. He apologized. Give this man another chance.
Could you spell your last name for me? Thank you.
No problem.
As you know, following what's going on, I've done on my sign at the restaurant, I'm still pissed off by what you did to my son. Especially you, Goulet, and you, John. You guys are rotten for what you did to him. And you did to him what you wanted to do to me. You took it out on him. He did nothing. He did not hurt Barnaby. I've got a letter here from Barnaby. Here it is. Let me read it. "Day of the incident." I've been waiting for this letter. That's why I haven't done anything. Man, I couldn't find him. He joined the Navy. Here he is. "Day of the incident between myself," at the time I was an eighth-grade coach, which A.J. didn't know he was once. All A.J. knows is that he was his first friend he ever met when he moved from Detroit six years ago. That boy slept in my house at least twenty times, Barnaby, overnights with him. They were friends. Barnaby. A.J. goes as follows. Coach Highstreet had told me to sit on the bench to help the guys out. I was just planning on sitting in the crowd like I usually do, helping there maybe in practice. So I sit on the bench, help the guys out. So near the end of the second quarter, A.J. makes a bad pass, gets upset, which I totally understand. The coach takes him out, not because he made a bad pass, but get an extra break before halftime so he'd get fresh for the second half. He comes off the bench. I noticed he was very upset, state of mind. He was guarding one of the best players in the league. As he sits down, he says, "I can't do anything right." So I said to him, "Well, giving up on one of those options." Giving up is one of those options. And hope of motivating him instead of thinking he couldn't do anything to help, he tells me that, "I've given up on my team before, and that shouldn't be the one talking." So I told him, "If that's how you feel, then go ahead." But the coach was telling me to yell at my teammates to get them to listen. So I asked, "When did I ever give up on my team, A.J.?" He said, "In St. Clair in the finals, you did." So I did that. Then he says, "Well, it was said the coaches, he pulled me out, not giving up on my team." To the situation. So his situation escalated more as he kept telling me to. He says, "I told him I wasn't going to do anything." And as he stands up, I'm still sitting on the bench. So he gives me a push to my knee, which he says, "Look, it didn't hurt me." And that way, that's when Nick Maska grabbed a hold of A.J. in a bear hug, telling him to sit down on the bench. Nick let go of A.J., and A.J. yelled, "What did I do?" And the quarter ended. Nick Maska had told both John, no, John Highstreet and Dan Maska what he heard and saw. Dan came out of locker room yelling at A.J., telling him, "Take this friggin' jersey off." So A.J. took it off, threw it across the locker room, and went and sat in the showers. So I went to talk to him. A.J. gets to get him cooled down, and he kept interrupting me. Blame, he says, "You got me thrown off the team, Barnaby." I kept trying to do something. I don't remember. So after the halftime speech in the locker room, oh, Barnaby, I apologized to A.J. It was my fault. He grabbed A.J.'s jersey off the ground, told him, "Tell him to put it back on, at least go sit on the bench for the second half." So I leave first. I sit on the bench. I come like a minute or so behind him. I sit on the bench. I told John that he was ready to go back in. John made him sit the rest of the game for his punishment. And that was going to be. After the game, the coaches and everyone kept trying to talk to A.J. He was so upset that he said, "Please leave me alone. I don't want to talk to anybody." We had a meeting about the whole thing. Remembering one else's perspective, he didn't do anything seriously wrong not to play the rest of the season. And not allowed to play baseball either, I thought was very extreme for a little shove. I understand that you can't put hands on a staff member, but just the little thing that hurt me in a way didn't intend to hurt me. I felt still the punishment was too extreme and over the top. For colleges not to take him would be a mistake. He's done so much for everyone else, and I'm 100% sure he's learned from this. Do not extend his high school punishment any longer. He is a great kid, and I hope that one thing does not take the rest of his life away. Alex Barnaby. So I text Alex after I get this email message. So I say, "Alex, is it true, is it true that A.J. was your first friend when you moved to Elginac six years ago?" He said, "Yes, sir." I said, "Really?" And he said, "Yeah." I'll tell you what. That's some... He never threw anybody under the bus. He got salted by two teachers. He got salted by Mike Crass and his junior year, and nobody did nothing. Mike Crass called my boy a friggin' head case. He shoved him in Richmond. Said, "Son, why didn't you fucking bunt?" He goes, "Coach." "You didn't give me the butt sign." So he said, "What's the butt sign?" "Oh, I forgot," he says, "to coach." That was one incident. But A.J. wouldn't throw Nick under the bus. That's his friend. Whenever he had a problem in school, he went over to Nick Maska's. He never threw him under the bus, and he still doesn't want to. All he wanted to do was play baseball the rest of the year and go to college. That was our dream. We're gonna go to college, and I was gonna go back with him. Because I never went to college. Can you see why I'm upset, Charlie? Huh? You're a muskrat, old muskrat. Most of these people here aren't muskrats. They ain't been here how long as us. They're gonna be gone in a few years. This is sad, what happened. I went over and talked to you about it. I don't know what the problem is. You think I'm making these stories, huh? I've never done anything against the school. Anytime they ask me for anything, I did something. Andy, can you raise some, can you get something for the concession? Can you do team dinners? Can you give us money for the raffles? I gave him ten, twelve years till Andy said, "Andy, let the league just give it to you." It hurt my feelings, but every year I gave you, what, $1,500 worth of food tickets for your raffles? Did I ever ask for anything? I asked one thing out of you one time, and this is what started all this shit. I asked you to give Mike Crass off that field in Richmond. Because what he did to my son, I said, "If he sees him, we're gonna lose this game." Did I say that, Andy? Did I say that on the bus to you? I begged you. Get him off the field, let him go in the box. Sit in the box so we don't see him, or we're gonna lose this game. Didn't I? Did I ask you that, Andy? Can you give me a friggin' shake to shake your head? Yes or no? Did I? Did I ask you that? Why didn't you go do it? Because then after the game, after we lost, my son comes up to me so emotionally upset, thinking that he lost the game because he fumbled that ball. And he played through that second half, limping, taped up, hurt, giving everything he's got to the school. I issued one favor. You couldn't do that. I wrecked in front of you with your wife. You put your friggin' head down. My kid came up crying, "Dad, it's my fault. I'm walking him out." No, it's not your fault, son. No, it isn't. So the next day, you know what I did? You want to know what I did? I called him. I said, "You know what?" My son didn't know this. I said, "We're done. My kid ain't playing for you guys no more. If you can't do one thing, then I asked you all these years I've been here, supporting, knowing what that friggin' Crass did to my son, that piece of shit coach that I told you were gonna fire last year. Andy, you getting rid of him? Yeah, thumbs up, twice. Otherwise, I'd put him in Marine City." Coach wanted him. Our coach didn't want him. He didn't want him to be quarterback. He's been MVP seven years, kids. "Dad, they didn't want me to be quarterback." I said, "Let's go to Marine City." So I sold my friggin' house that he grew up in, that I built for my wife. I said, "We're gonna go live in the restaurant. We're gonna go to Marine City." "Golich wants you, and he's the baseball coach." Well, that pissed off Barnhart, pissed him off. And Andy told John, and that's where John comes in. You've talked to me, how many times did you call me that day, John? Three, four? I didn't answer? Do you remember that day? Do you remember? I do. This big day. I answered the phone. You talked to me for an hour and ten minutes, settling me. "Andy, you can't work him out. You can't do this. Things are on a roll. You can't do it." I'd have never pulled him out of this school. I was tired. I asked one friggin' thing, and you couldn't do it. I get a letter here. This is real sick. Here's a real sick one, and they told my kid about it. Here we are. I'm over it. I have a meeting with Coach Barnhart. He comes up to the restaurant, him and his assistant, Thaler. We talk. We didn't even have lunch. We talked so much. Talked about it hours. Talked about my son. And I said, "Well..." I said, "Coach," I said, "my son feels like he doesn't even have a spot on the team." He goes, "Well, he's gotta earn that spot, Andy." I said, "He's been the MVP for five, six years straight on the team. He's gotta earn it." He goes, "Well, yeah, he's gonna be playing." I said, "Well, is he gonna be your quarterback? Is he gonna be even playing?" "Well, no, he's not gonna be the quarterback. I want him to be the fullback." I said, "Why? Because he can't run that fast?" You know what he said? "No, that other kid can really run fast." I go, "Oh, okay. All right, he can run fast." Now, A.J.'s quarterback coach said, "Well, you know, you lack in speed." But he says, "All you do is run forward, run over him. Some kids can run a little faster sideways. You get a kid that's strong runs up the middle." But we'll get back to it. I go, "Barnhart," I go, "I said, "So if you don't want him to be your quarterback, let me know. Marine City wants him." They got up and walked out of the meeting. Next day, I pull in the lumberjack. This kid's out there working at the school. He goes, "Hey, Andy, your son's gonna be number two quarterback." He goes, "Yeah." He goes, "Yeah, and also you tried to bribe the coach. So your son would be starting quarterback." I said, "Really?" So that night, I don't know, was that same night or the next night, I came down when he had the meetings over at the other school, and nobody let me talk. They grabbed me out. "You can't talk, Andy, can't talk." I wound up about it. So then, the next day, you know who calls me? Who calls me? Mr. Melrose. Something, didn't somebody call me? Do you remember? Come down to your office. I get summons to his office. Where's the letter here? Okay. So that day, well, I mean, I'm jumping a little ahead. A.J. comes home from practice. All the boys are all eating at the restaurant, twelve fifteen of them. He goes, "Andy, Mr...." Or A.J. goes, "Dad, you know what? Who was that practice? They didn't get rid of Crass. They made him a friggin' football coach. He said they were firing him." So I go, "Holy shit, he ain't gonna be able to play baseball." And at practice that day, A.J. says, "Coach..." Oh, all the kids were laughing about it. Coach went a little wild. I go, "What happened?" He goes, "Well, yeah, I was in practice and... Coach comes up. He goes, "Garshat, why aren't you in there?" He goes, "Well, I took myself out. Viper wanted me to football. Been about half an hour." He goes, "So I put myself, put Shane in." Coach flipped out. "Well, you're not a leader. Captains don't pull themselves out of games." He goes, "You want me to hold me to the ball, coach? So he said there's about eight or nine footballs sitting there laying around, and he's kicking them, kicking them all over. Fuck, 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 fuck." So then I get there. I start, I text Coach again. I, "Hey, Coach, will you come up to the restaurant? I want to talk to you." And they didn't call me back. So I texted him back later. Said, "Hey, Coach, bring Stevenson too if you got any balls left." I meant about kicking the footballs around. Here we are. That was August twenty. Here I am. I get a letter. "Come down, Mr. Landrum. Mr. Melrose signed it. Andy, you need to come down to the office, Andy. So why don't you guys come up to the restaurant? No, you need to come to the office." Here it is. "Mr. Garshat, this letter is in regards to two incidents in contact you had with the head varsity football coach, Scott Barnhart. During the last two weeks, there have been two separate incidents of you calling and texting Coach Barnhart in regards to concerns over your son, A.J. The contents of those calls, texts have been threatened in nature and inappropriate. In short, unacceptable communications towards a high school coach. So we understand period of support for children in area athletics and future communications, you might, must be brought forth in a more appropriate manner. If you have any concerns regarding athletics for A.J., you will contact Athletic Director Mitch Landrum, and he'll be investigating those concerns." "Elginac High School has a positive relationship with you and your son over the last few years, and we wish to continue that relationship. However, any further inappropriate communications with Coach Barnhart or any other employees of the Elginac School System will result in administration from banning you from all high school athletic events and your presence of any Elginac properties." He said, "If you don't sign that, Andy, you can't come to any of his games." I said, "Are you kidding me? Did I say that, Mr. Melrose?" I laughed about it. I said, "Are you fucking kidding me?" "Oh, no, we're not kidding. Sign it, or you don't get to go to any of his games." So I signed it. I'm gonna miss out on my kids' games over this guy that's so self-absorbed. Never said one nice thing about him in the newspapers all year. John used to pull him out of class, didn't he? "Keep it up, son. Good job." Then what happened? Kid gets in his face, spat in his face. Yale game, he's guarding the Player of the Year for Yale. They're teaching him to be the enforcer. "Mrs. Stiltner, because you questioned my son. What's the next time you're gonna do when you get mad? Really hurt someone bad? He never hurt anybody." That kid was standing next to him, touching him. Garshat, they're buddies. They grew up together. And he pushed his knee away, said, "Get away." Then he stood up. The buzzer went off, and he gets grabbed by a teacher, his friend. And then the other one goes and grabs his jersey because something he thought he heard wasn't right. He's off the team. He's freaking out. "What the frig just happened to me?" Barnaby's in the locker room screaming, "I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. You just got me kicked off the F-ing team." Barnaby's in the locker room screaming, "I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, you just got me kicked off the F-ing team." They heard the F-bombs a few times. Okay? It's boys do. He didn't hurt anybody. He apologized to everyone my sister read that letter off. When I heard him read that letter over here, and I friggin' cried like a baby. Broke him down, broke me down, and went, "How in the hell could these people do this to him?" Well, who made this decision? I thought to myself, "All this thing going on, who made, I know you wouldn't do that to him. I know you wouldn't, I could look in your eyes and see you couldn't do it. I know Mr. Landrum wouldn't, he loves my boy. Him and his, and my boy have been friends for years." So who else is there in this administration? How many other people are there?
Mr. Garsha, I don't mean to cut you.
No, no, no. John, John, you didn't want him, did you?
Excuse me, just.
No, I'm not done.
Well.
No, no?
No, I, Andy.
No, no, I'm not done.
Yeah.
You, you wanted to ruin my kid's career.
Mr. Garsha, would you listen to me a moment?
Why?
Would you listen to me a moment? You cannot go to a public meeting, I've never put a time on anyone, and I'm not going to, but I'm gonna tell you, we're getting real close here, they do have to stop. But number two.
What do you want me to?
I understand you want to tell your story.
You want it here or you want it in the newspaper?
Excuse me, I understand you want to tell your story, but you also went to an, went through an appeal process.
Then who, yeah, but who, who made this appeal up?
Were you at that?
Oh, yeah, I was.
Did you read the handbook for athletics?
Oh, so you're defending this man here?
Did you listen to me?
This guy here be gone next year.
Mr. Garsha.
He don't care about Elgin Act.
You can sit down.
I can sit anywhere.
Andy, because I'm done. I'm done, I was giving you a chance.
Oh, you know what? No, you didn't do it. No, I'm not surprised.
Andy.
I didn't do anything wrong, Andy won't answer, no.
You're done.
You're done.
No, come on, don't make it worse.
I was giving you a chance.
Why? Why am I done? Something you don't want to hear?
No.
Time limit.
Because you don't want to listen. You don't want to listen.
Well, you don't want to. Ms. Stilner, you were so misled when you said that to my kid.
Okay.
Don't you.
Thank you, Mr. Garsha.
Charlie, you gonna say anything?
Thank you very much. Now, please sit down. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Don't you care? Don't you care? Don't you care about kids?
Okay, um, let's move on to the resolution for the regular school election.
To make a motion that the Board of Education approves the resolution as presented, calling for the regular school elections to take place at the general election Tuesday, November eighth, 2016. Unavailable will be a bond to that, not to exceed eight point seven one million dollars, and a sinking fund not to exceed one mil, a complete cavity of the information. Support?
All those in favor?
No. Go outside.
Opposed? Motion carries.
On that note, just to remind everyone where we are on the timeline here, we have two timelines. We have the bond campaign, which is going real well, TMP, a personal work with Yale. She was actually the lead person on the, or on projects, so there's timelines actually up there, it's quite a aggressive timeline. The timeline that I just passed out is more legal timeline, that's one where we have to be right on. So you can see after this approval on number six, I will contact Trimsaw Law. Just to remind the Board where we're on, pretty tight timeline.
Okay, negotiation is out for a motion.
Motion to go into executive session at five thirty-five for the purpose of discussing negotiations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will be going into closed session, and when we come back, I'll be in on more.
Motion to adjourn.
Support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much.